Are you in a position where you want to stay in the room, or you would like to leave?
I would.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Taylor?
On the same application, I also did not realise this application was for a report. It's non prejudicial, and I'm quite happy to stay and listen to the doctor.
Okay, what we have in this particular case is we have one of the councillors who's applied for planning permission for a small adjustment to his house. Normally it would go through on delegated, but because it's a councillor, it's come to committee meeting, so we will be discussing that later. Sorry, councillor Metcalf, you're saying that you've got a prejudicial...
No, yourself, you used the same words. I've not seen the application, but I was not aware of the application at all.
If you feel it's prejudicial, then you will need to leave the room at the same time as well, I'm afraid.
I suppose it's non prejudicial.
I'll just have a quick consultation with my lawyer. Okay. I think we're using the wrong terminology here. The word prejudicial means that you have a financial interest or something similar in the actual project. I don't believe that to be the case. I just believe that you've got to know the councillor personally, as do we all, but you've known him for a lot longer than we have, so in that case, I'm happy for you to stay. Councillor Murdoch, just in the interest of impartiality, has requested to leave the room. As a personal choice, yes. Okay, everyone happy with this? Yep? Thank you. Any urgent items of business? Thank you. And I think we will, if time permitting, because we could possibly have a long evening tonight, we will have a look at that at the end of the night if everyone's happy, but we'll readdress that at the end of the evening. Thank you. So right to address the meeting. We have quite a few speakers again this evening, so I've prioritised the order to accommodate the people with the most speakers. So, item six, One Matlock Road now becomes item eight. Item seven stays as item seven. Item eight becomes item ten. Item nine becomes an item six. Item ten becomes item nine. Item eleven becomes item twelve. Item twelve becomes item thirteen. And item thirteen becomes item eleven. And with that, I will hand over to you, Mr Palmer.
Thank you, Chairman. First item, thirty five Windermere Crescent. Report that there's been significant negotiations to get us to this stage. This application is with all matters reserved. We are looking at a detached bungalow, and that is a true bungalow, not a chalet bungalow, with that footprint. Square shown there is the recommended location of the new bungalow, with some off-street parking, rear garden for private amenity space. We, as officers, have evaluated the merits of the scheme, and we consider that these elevations, albeit illustrative, because all matters are reserved, do reflect a former development that can fit in this location without being materially harmful to the wider character of the area. Subject to that, Chairman, we are recommending the scheme for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have two speakers, one with the objector and one with the applicant. We'll start with the objector, Mr Kevin Richardson. If you want to come forward and sit in the centre of the room. In front of you, you'll have one of our speakers. Just at the bottom right-hand corner, there's a grey-blue button. When you press that, the little red light will come on on your microphone and tell you that you're ready to speak. When you're happy, then you can start speaking. We have a traffic light system here. Green light tells you you've got two minutes. Amber light means you've got one minute left. Red light means I will stop you from speaking. So that's three minutes in total for telling us. Okay, when you're ready?
Okay. Thanks for seeing me today and taking the time to allow me to express the objections. Not just my objections, they're the neighbours' objections as well. I think the letter went out to twelve residents, twelve houses. Six of those put up an objection onto the portal, so that's fifty per cent objection to the local area. And this is, as you explained, this is the fourth application for this site, because it originally started as flats and it's been reduced down. The actual main objection is overdevelopment, because it's a residential area with families. The layout that you had up on the board just a second ago doesn't actually show that the existing number thirty-five has a double-storey extension across the back of the property, which effectively closes that whole area, so there would leave two residential properties with no gardens whatsoever. And so that existing property is a five-bedroom house. So that leaves a five-bedroom house with no garden, and the new two-bedroom bungalow with no garden. There's a rear concrete area for bins and cycle storage, I think you find. So the previous senior planner from Eastbourne Council, she actually visited the site, and she said that a residential property of this nature, with a smaller footprint for the detached house that was going on there before, wouldn't get permission, because you can't really have no garden for residential properties. This footprint is actually bigger, because the other one was a detached house, it had two stories, so they've actually condensed that down to make a bigger footprint. And so there's actual, now there's considerably larger surface area covered by concrete, so it's going to potentially cause water runoff, drainage issues, because we already have quite boggy gardens in that area, and we are getting quite serious, because it's clay-based, so it does get quite bad drainage. So if you cover that whole area, which is proposed, with concrete, I think you're going to get serious flooding in that area. The other thing is the footprint and size. It's effectively, the development before was for a three-bedroom chalet bungalow, and effectively what's happened is, they've just taken the dormers off to alleviate the concerns of privacy and overlooking, and they've just left the same footprint, but with a one-story, single-story. So I think the concern is that, as soon as it gets approved, or if it gets approved, then the dormers will just be put back in, or there'll be velux windows put back in in six months or a year's time, raising privacy concerns again. There's no need for a single story to have such a high roof space, because that's going to create loss of light and the potential for future putting dormer windows in. That's originally why that was designed, and just taking those off hasn't really changed the design, I don't think. So in summary, I agree the site is suitable for a small development with a garden, but it's not, the current proposal is overdevelopment, it's inaccurate plan, because you have...
I'm going to have to stop you there, I'm afraid, for a bit of time. I'm going to have to stop you there, sorry. Thank you. Good evening. So, before we start, just a small grey button at the bottom right-hand corner of the box. When that goes on, the microphone comes on, and when you're ready.
Thank you. Right. My name's David Sands, I am the agent for the application. There was some confusion at the start of it, that it was going to be dormers put in, or could be under permitted development, but I wrote to, I wrote an email to Luke Simpson from the planning department on the 7th of February, asking him to change the application name, which he subsequently did, from the dormer bungalow which was left on from the previous application. I did say in my email, as we discussed, there is no intention to utilise the loft space, as this is not high enough for a dormer construction. The roof may look slightly too large, but it's the right pitch for a tiled roof, which is thirty degrees. No intention at all of going into the loft. I agree totally with all the planning officer's suggestions that things can be amended at the full application stage, which is entirely possible. Just that, thank you for listening to me, and I hope we're supported. Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. If you could just turn the microphone off for us, please?
Certainly.
Lovely, thank you. Return your seats. We've got Roslands at the top of the application, which I now believe is Devonshire. So who would like to start this one off? Anybody? Councillor Mayor?
Thank you, Chairman. I never expected to start in the beginning at this stage, but what I have seen and hearing the speakers here, and looking at all the things, and the visual look, which I, when I went to check everything there, I mean personally, I looked at that area, I couldn't get really behind it, because I'm a little bit too short a man, so... But to be honest with you, what I found really is nothing, nothing to really go against for this proposal. So I feel that the report here, what I've learned from it and what I've seen visually, I haven't got anything against it, so possibly, you know, I would go for the officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think Councillor Mayor is absolutely right. I think, from my area that I represent, a corner plot like that is vulnerable for development. Oh, sorry, I thought I had a big loud voice, and people moan I'm too loud. But in actual fact, it was mentioned about the loss of amenity space, but I think the host property has an awful lot of amenity space. It may not be in the back garden, but it is around the area of it. And I can see no real problem. I may ask the officers, it has been mentioned about the possible dormers coming along in the future, but they would, I'm sure, be possibly subject to a planning application if anybody wanted to put anything in the roof of that particular bungalow. So I can see no particular reason for refusal, Mr Chairman. Do you want me to move, or has Councillor Mayor already done that?
Happy for you to move, if you'd like to move. Councillor Mayor, would you like to second? Yeah. I'd just like to add in there, before we take a vote, when we went round to do the site visit, the plots, looking at the drawing here on the left-hand side, that one there here, has got some side windows, so at the moment, if we allow the drawing to go through as is, there's going to be a little bit of overshadowing up against those windows. And I'm also concerned, like everybody else is, about the fact that that could be developed into a loft space afterwards. There is 2.5 metres there, that's more than adequate enough to be able to do that. So if we could make sure that either we have a hip roof on there, or we make sure that there will be absolutely no development allowed afterwards, then I'm happy for that to go through.
Chairman, assist there. Members are very keen to have further control over loft changes. We can have a positive condition to control that. It doesn't exist at the moment, apart from condition seven, that has a height restriction, but that doesn't stop the loft space being converted necessarily. So we can put a condition on restricting or requiring any additional velux and/or dormers requiring planning permission.
Lovely, thank you. I think because we've had a number of applications here before, and they've all been too large, I think this plot is crying out for development, but it needed to be something nice and small, and I think this one fits in well with the street scene and what we've got already. So we have a proposal, we have a second. All those in favour of the development? Thank you. So, Lantern Rear, thirty-five Windermere Crescent, gets planning permission, thank you, unanimously. Next item, Auckland Key.
Through you, Chairman. This application follows a member's site visit to have a look at the front and back of the property a few weeks ago. The application, edged red, highlights the application site, so Auckland Key comes in through here. The back gardens of these properties have an outlook out over the harbour. The proposal before members is to enlarge some front dormers that we can see here. These are the existing dormers at the bottom of the image, and at the rear, the two rear dormers to be replaced by a single unified dormer with a roof terrace, extension here, extension here, and a ground floor extension across the entire width of the property. Members will note from this side elevation that the first floor is recessed, that distance, and the exposed ground floor is to be used as external decking. So if I show you, members, the floor plan, here we have the proposed ground floor, and as I suggest, it's an entire rear width. First floor have the first floor elements recessed, and there is access on to the roof terraces of the new single-story flat roof. We have privacy screens through the side on both flank elevations. Now, what is not in the members' papers before them is a very recent appeal decision for this site that proposed exactly the same scheme as this, but without the privacy screens, and that appeal was dismissed because of the impact on neighbouring properties. So, members, we are bringing this application to members with a recommendation for approval, and in our view, the privacy screens down the flank here and here mitigate the overlooking to a satisfactory degree, such that we are recommending the scheme for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Once again, we have two speakers for this, an objector and the applicant. Mr Allen, if you're here, if you'd like to come forward. So, little grey button just at the bottom right-hand corner of the speaker. When you're ready, that's not on. That, that's, sorry, that's, you haven't pressed the right button. It's a grey-blue button at the bottom left-hand corner, bottom right-hand corner, sorry. Yep. Can we swap with councillor Chowdhury, please? Councillor Chowdhury, if you would mind sharing with councillor Mayor.
Sorry, are we ready now?
Yes, when you're ready.
Okay. Good evening. As has just been pointed out, actually, in fact, I should start by saying I represent the owner of number nine, as well as myself and number seven, and the other people who have objected to the scheme for perhaps good reason, and it's up to you to decide. As your planning officer has just pointed out, this application, one seven one four three eight, is actually identical to the scheme, one seven one oh seven eight, save, in my opinion, for the unwelcome addition of the six-foot-high opaque screens. They're totally out keeping with the development and the design. They don't appear anywhere else, and in effect, were rejected when we actually applied for our own single-story extension. The scheme has already been dismissed by the government on appeal, and I can't see any reason why it shouldn't be again, even if it's allowed to go to appeal, which I'm not even sure that it is. I can't understand why your officers have actually done a hundred-and-eighty-degree U-turn and recommended acceptance based on two screens. When previously, on design issues and other things, they rejected the scheme. That's a bit of a mystery, but no doubt you can unravel that one. The use of the flat roofs as terraces has been denied both on number seven and number nine, and number nine as recently as last month, and its use is only allowed for maintenance access. I can't understand why suddenly these terraces would be allowed to have access on them. If they do, in fact, of course, I shall apply myself for access, and number six will get upset. I have actually submitted some photographs, because both the planning officers and, indeed the appeals inspector, seem to think that there's no overshadowing. I have actually issued photographs, one on the 8th of February, clearly showing that there is major problems with overshadowing, probably for something like four months of the year, and I find it hard to understand. I can only assume that people didn't visit first thing in the morning, and bear in mind that we are north of an east-west facing building. Somebody has raised the point that balconies on the eight houses opposite have been allowed, but I would just point out that they don't have any gardens, whereas, of course, we do. Finally, just to sum up, I'd like to say that I think these extensions spoil the rhythm of the fifteen houses that make up this Millwood Waterside development. It is overbearing, it is unnecessary development, in my opinion, and it affects not only the rhythm of the estate, but in fact, to be honest, the rhythm of my life, because it's going to adversely affect the way we use our property. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if we could have the applicant, Mr Baker, please?
I am Bernard Harry Baker, RIBA Chartered Architect and Director at Baker Architectural Limited. This is a household application to a detached house for a number of small extensions, plus a two-story rear extension with balconies. The primary point of concern is the rear balconies. The first planning application was refused for one reason, direct overlooking. During the consultation process of the previous application, there were various revised proposals prepared, and these incorporated within the final drawings of the planning decision. The depth of the proposed ground floor extension is some 4.265 metres, and permitted development permits extensions up to four metres. The first floor extension has been reduced to 2.2 metres, just 2.065 metres on the wings, and permitted development under the GPDO 2015 permits three metres. The only point that requires planning permission to the rear extension is the balcony areas, one reason given for the refusal, previous refusal, direct overlooking. The scale, mass, bulk of the extension is fine with a case officer. The scale, mass, and extension is fine with the external architectural consultant, Anna Clare. The scale and mass of the extension is fine with the planning inspector. The reasons considered by the inspector were massing, daylighting, overshadowing. The planning inspector referred to the council not raising concerns and did not give these as reasons to dismiss the appeal. The appeal decision states one reason for dismissing the previous appeal contained within five and six. It's the same reason in the planning decision, overlooking and loss of privacy. The current scheme with the privacy screens overcomes this issue. The existing property has a balcony which directly overlooks number nine, therefore the situation with the glaze screen will be an improvement. There are many glass balconies around the harbour, and design reflects the mixed eclectic architectural style. The case officer report advises the scheme is designed to a high standard. Number seven and nine Auckland Key have had extensions. Number nine has permission under seventeen twelve fifty-nine for a 4.1 metre ground floor extension, just 165 millimetres less than the submitted scheme. The case officer recommendation is for approval with conditions. I feel none of the proposed conditions are onerous to my client, and note the two informatives. The scheme has the backing of the case officer, and if refused, I would concur, as written in the report, that a written representation is an appropriate way forward. My client purchased the property for the main reason of enjoying the view of the harbour, and as the case officer reports, to maximise views of the harbour. The balconies with screens will allow her and her family to enjoy the view. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, just to clarify, why this has come back to planning again is because the last time it was refused purely on the basis of overlooking. The screens are now mitigating that, which is now the reason why it's come back, so it's the same design, but we've got the screens in place, which now keeps the planning inspector happier. Councillor Metcalf?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I've got a couple of concerns on the property, of which obviously I do know quite well. It is on the other side of North Harbour from where I live. One of them is, I note that there are no other extensions in that area that have any further than the single story. Would this be setting a precedent to have an upper floor as an extension? That's one concern. And the other concern is, I note a flat roof is led off of the balcony on the top floor. That flat roof could be used as a sun terrace, although it hasn't got any balcony around the edge, it could soon be put there, and I think that would become a concern, particularly to the neighbours of Auckland Key. Just those two concerns, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Mr Palmer?
Through you, Chairman. Just by way of clarification, this central part of the development through here is a roof terrace. That's a positive proposal by the applicant, with some French doors in here. The view and opinion around overlooking is that the gable ends through here mitigate the oblique views down into neighbouring plots. Views will be afforded directly out over rear garden into the harbour, same way that they do from the first floor rear windows. In terms of setting a precedent around first floor extensions, in some regards, yes, it would be the first out of the blocks, but as members will be aware, that doesn't necessarily mean a bad thing. We have considered the merits of the scheme, and considered the architectural merits in this instance, set an appropriate standard of design, layout and accommodation, and as the speaker mentioned, and I will echo here, that the appeal inspector did not make any negative commentary around the scale, mass and design of the development, only how that development impacted on neighbour in terms of direct overlooking. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Just a quick point, the fact that it might set a precedent isn't a material concern. Each application is taken on its own merits, so we're looking at this application and this application only, and not worrying about what might not come in. And the other concern is, I note a flat roof is led off of the balcony on the top floor. That flat roof could be used as a sun terrace. Although it hasn't got any balcony around the edge, it could soon be put there, and I think that would become a concern, particularly to the neighbours of Auckland Key. Just those two concerns, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Mr Palmer.
Through you, Chairman. Just by way of clarification, this central part of the development through here is a roof terrace. That's a positive proposal by the applicant, with some French doors in here. The view and opinion around overlooking is that the gable ends through here mitigate the oblique views down into neighbouring plots. Views will be afforded directly out over rear garden into the harbour, same way that they do from the first floor rear windows. In terms of setting a precedent around first floor extensions, in some regards, yes, it would be the first out of the blocks, but as members will be aware, that doesn't necessarily mean a bad thing. We have considered the merits of the scheme, and considered the architectural merits in this instance, set an appropriate standard of design, layout and accommodation. And as the speaker mentioned, and I will echo here, that the appeal inspector did not make any negative commentary around the scale, mass and design of the development, only how that development impacted on neighbour in terms of direct overlooking. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Just a quick point, the fact that it might set a precedent isn't a material concern. Each application is taken on its own merits, so we're looking at this application and this application only, and not worrying about what might not come in the future. Thank you. Councillor Robertson.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question. One of the speakers noted that houses on either side had balconies that they had no planning permission to use. Is there a particular reason for that?
Again, through you, Chairman. The neighbouring properties apply for single-storey extensions, and we put a positive condition on that, on those extensions, saying that any development of that flat roof requires a further consent, with the mindset that if they had a positive choice to use that as an external emergency area, then mitigation would have to come into play, the same way as we're looking at here, then with some privacy screens down the flank, then it may well be considered to be appropriate. To have unfettered use of the single-storey flat roof extensions, as outlined by the appeal inspector, was found to be unacceptable, and that's why we sought those controls on the single-storey extensions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor.
Mr Chairman, I think sometimes this is a situation where it's obviously been refused in the past, sometimes, I can't remember now, but, and the inspector came along and had a look, and he's brought out that it's only the reasons overlooking. Maybe this was a case where there weren't enough reasons for refusal last time for the inspector to look at, and the main reason we had was the overlooking. I quite like, I have to admit, I quite like the development. It may be the first of those ones, but I think it's very ambitious, and again, I can see no real reason, even though it has a sun terrace there that comes out, you wouldn't be able to overlook on anybody, it wouldn't personally affect anybody, any of the neighbours. So it may not be a popular development, because it is quite large, but that's not what the building inspector considered, and he was only worried about the overlooking, as we should be worried, and that's been answered by having the screen on the side. And so I, as Chairman, have no reason for refusal, but...
Thank you. And as I mentioned last week, the government is trying to encourage people to expand on their properties and things, and has taken away some of the restrictions that we used to have as a planning committee, and now there's a lot more permitted developments that we don't have an awful lot of control over, which can be very frustrating when we're dealing with local issues. But, Councillor Meir.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, that flat roof, I'm going to go back to it. First of all, is there any, because I could see it's just a plane, is there any barriers going to be there? Because we know in future, this is the idea, that people will come out to the backyard and obviously on the first floor. So can I ask this question? Is there going to be any restriction on that first of all, please?
Mr Palmer.
Sorry. The upper terrace located here is accessed from the central position here. The views are directly out over the rear garden and down to the harbour. The gable ends of the first floor new extensions provide adequate privacy, looking this way and looking that way. So the neighbours will have their gardens protected by the upper floor extension. So in elevation terms, just bear with me, the terrace is sited in here, and this gable end and this gable end mitigate the direct overlooking. We have a privacy screen down here, and a privacy screen down here for the roof terraces at single-storey level. Hope that clarifies the situation.
Thank you, officer. Yeah, as Councillor Taylor has said, that it's, to me, it is a first development I could see on that particular area, but I don't see any problem with any other problems. But the only worries were that in future, I'm sure that they will get people out to the backyard, and obviously, not yard, but that's the first floor. But I personally would like to see some kind of barrier or some kind of railings or something on the first floor thingy, if there is any possibility. Otherwise, I haven't got anything against it. Thank you.
There is a handrail in between the two roofs, two pitched roofs, which is shown on a drawing just there. That'll be a minimum of a metre high.
Thank you, Chair. Interesting how different a proposal looks on the drawing than when we do a site visit. The interesting thing was, when I done the site visit, was really the depth it comes out in the back garden, which really, if you look there, there's that line, which is the slope, which is quite a slope down to the area, to the harbour, but the extension comes out to about that slope. At the time, as you look at it, you think, wow, but as it's single story, you know, lots of people will have a single-story extension now, I know it's slightly over, but yeah, as I say, these houses haven't really been developed yet, but it's, as you said, there's always going to be a first for the future. Yeah, it was the windows concerning me, but now the obscure glass they're going to put on either side is something that's now, you know, cancelling out the overlooking, which is good, and I was concerned about the second-floor proposal of the flat roof. But as you say, with the gables, it also is stopping that overlooking, you know, on both sides of the property. So at the end of the day, I was concerned about the size, but now with different items, with different things, and when you look next door at number seven, it still protrudes quite a way down their garden. Yeah, it's an application that was difficult to assess when we first saw it, but after doing a site visit, it does open up to what they're looking at, and I can understand with the overlooking or the overbearing, but with a single story, mainly the big extension is on the ground floor, I can't see any issues with this application now.
Thank you. Who would like to... Councillor Taylor, yes?
Just a point of clarification, because it looks like that balustrade, and you mentioned about a metre high, can I say under health and safety that is not high enough? Don't know whether that applies to this, the officers.
Through you, Chairman. It will be a building regs requirement to make sure it is at least 1.1 metres below finished roof level. In, under here, this is a slightly recessed roof that you'd be standing on, so the roof through here and the balustrade will give a minimum requirement for protection under the building regs.
Sorry, Mr Councillor Taylor, I was taking a guess. Anyone would like to move? Councillor Meir? Would you like to second? Councillor Taylor, oh, Councillor Coles to second. So Councillor Meir is moving, Councillor Coles is seconding. All those in favour of development, please raise. So that's unanimously approved for the extension on the back of Auckland, sorry, A Auckland Key. I didn't give anybody a chance to escape last time, so if anybody would like to leave now, please do, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Next item, I believe, is one Matlock Road. The area is edged red as the application site and property. The application location is this hatched building here, so you access the building up a shared drive in here to a semi-private open space. So here's the structure, and it's a very utilitarian appearance. That utilitarian appearance has reached the end of its beneficial life, and the applicant is looking to replace the existing building, which is the sketch here, with a re-built structure, that's the bottom image, such that the accommodation can change from utility room and storage to one that performs more of a incidental residential use connected with the main property. The incidental residential use is not wholeheartedly mentioned in the application. It could be any other incidental use, so it could be a games room, it could be a home office, it could be a kids' playroom. All of those are deemed to be incidental to the enjoyment of the dwelling house. We as officers find that the redevelopment of the building in this location, out onto this semi-public area, is not harmful to the character of the broader area, and the design and appearance of what is to be replaced is entirely appropriate, in our view, and we are recommending the scheme for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We have one speaker on this one, Rebecca Madell, if you'd like to come forward. We can't take any photographs at this point, I'm afraid. They have to be presented beforehand. Sorry. We've all been out and done a site visit, so... When you're ready, if you press the grey button for me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Rebecca Madell. I am the planning adviser for the Meads Community Association. I am here to support the application to renovate the lean-to building in the garden of one Matlock Road, Matlock Road, in order to create a garden room. The applicant, whose family has owned the property for over 20 years, accessed their garden by a staircase or via the lane to the side of the property. The applicant has recently restored the listed Shepherd's Lookout to a very high standard, such that it was praised by conservation. This application is to renovate the lean-to to a similar high standard. The small building will be faced with natural wood, allowing it to mellow to soft silver, and the paintwork will mirror that of the listed building. The plastic roof will also be replaced by traditional tard roof. Despite being partially overlooked by several properties, it is interesting that have been no objections, bar the one from the owner of Matlock Barn. This is somewhat ironic, as there is virtually no visual impact on the objector, as the property is divided by a 12-foot high wall. The objector has also expressed concerns about the unadopted lane shared with the applicant. I would like to point out that the applicant has a legal document drawn up by the previous owner in 1996 confirming the established right-of-way over the past 50 years. The applicant would like to reassure the owner of Matlock Barn that they will keep the builders' activity in the lane to a minimum, and will respect the conditions imposed by the Eastbourne Borough Council. As I see this application as nothing but a great improvement to the conservation area, I would like to support the officer's recommendation and ask the committee to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to start? Councillor Taylor. Your patch?
In fact, I called this, Mr Chairman, because... Oh, was that going to be turned on? Rebecca should... Because the resident at the back was concerned that there would be a possibility of being used for commercial use. Now, that's not the case, because now, I believe, condition number five says that it cannot be used, the development shall not be used for any other commercial use, which I think satisfies her. Can I say that the objector, or no, the resident there, never actually objected to what the proposals were? She was concerned about, and it doesn't really clearly show, the possible sewer extension going into a sewer that runs down her driveway. And I believe the officer will confirm afterwards, that I believe in the report it says that's subject to another application, of which I've assured her for that. And so in actual fact, I too, along with Mrs Madell, I'm quite happy with the application. She did mention, it's interesting, because she did mention the gazebo, I think she called it, Shepherd's, and at the present moment, I was round there today, actually, and had a quick look, and I do strongly, Mr Chairman, and I shouldn't do that, urge the residents that have made a good job of refurbishing it, that at least the drainage water from the roof doesn't have to be discharged over the property of the lady in the barn. I believe the conservation area officer is quite happy with that being discharged within their own property, which is where it should be, but at the present moment, it has a section of guttering missing, and is discharged, the surface water is discharged over the neighbour's garden. And I'm not, this committee isn't here to consider neighbour disputes, but I just thought I'd perhaps mention it, as councillor, as Mrs Madell is here today, and maybe she'd have a little look and perhaps persuade the applicant that they could tidy up the guttering on that. Other than that, I think, providing it's not used for commercial use, I think the neighbour would be quite happy. Thank you, Mr Chairman, for your patience.
Thank you. I've got a little nod from Mrs Madell there, so, Councillor Coles?
Thank you very much, Chair. I too went and had a look at the place on Saturday, and I thought, what a great improvement it would be. If I was the owner of that property, I would be very pleased to see the change, and providing any extra conditions are taken care of, I see no reason why it shouldn't go ahead.
Thank you. Councillor Meir?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, former councillor and the chair of the planning here, who has presented today's, this application, and I personally agree with everything that's been already said. And actually, when I went there, Councillor Taylor has already mentioned about that little waterways too. Yeah, I feel that, but as he also mentioned, that it is not our, it's a neighbouring dispute, which I'm not going to say anything about it, but I would humbly request Mrs Madell to look at this personally, if she can, and sort something out, if that can be possible. Otherwise, personally, I think it's a great development, and it's wonderful to see things are moving on, and I'm quite happy to move that if, you know, when it's time there. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give Mr Taylor the opportunity to move, if you'd like to. Are you happy for me to move? If you'd like to second. Yep. So Councillor Meir is moving, Councillor Taylor is seconding. All those in favour of the development, please raise. So unanimously approved for the extension at A Matlock, sorry, at Matlock Road. Thank you. We're going to take a very short recess, if anybody wants to... We're going to take a very short recess, if anybody wants to... Moving on to item number nine, which is Terminus Road.
Thank you, Chairman. The application site for members just to locate themselves is the former post office building at Terminus Road. Members will know the site, this end of Terminus Road goes into Langley Road through here. The elevation is seen on this image here, it's been vacant for 12 months plus. This is the transition from key primary shopping frontage to more of a secondary location as we go down Langley Road. The reason it's coming to planning committee is that the change of use of the ground floor of the property breaches a fairly old planning policy. I say fairly old because it seeks to retain a predominance of A1 retail, but that plan was formulated significantly before the Arndale extension was not necessarily thought of, but certainly before it became being constructed. So our view, as articulated in the officer's report, is that as this is right at the end of the primary shopping frontage, and that we have a new heart to the town centre that is the Arndale extension, that we can begin to look at alternative uses other than pure retail. The application before members is the change of use to A3, A5. Members may note who the applicant is and are. Members also should inform themselves that we can't control that occupier occupying the building. So my advice to planning committee members, it is the change of use to A3, A5. The operator shouldn't necessarily be persuasive to members, apart from the issue around it being potentially a national operator. A national operator will have high standards in terms of litter, in terms of cleanliness of their establishment, in terms of part-time, full-time FTEs, and in-house training regimes. So our advice to planning committee members is that whilst there is a modest breach of our planning policy, in this instance, it is considered to be an acceptable proposal. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Who would like first? Anybody? Councillor Taylor? I was just about to step in there.
It is a breach of planning policy, but if the officer's, it's very ambitious, a huge, huge sign.
I do apologise, Mr. Taylor, we do have a speaker for this.
Oh, okay.
My apologies. Mr. Daly, who's the applicant. I do apologise. Okay, when you're ready, we have three minutes.
Good evening, members. My name is Patrick Daly of DPP Planning, and I'm the agent for this application. I kindly ask you to turn to the addendum note, which was forward to do yesterday evening, and provide some more comprehensive overview of the proposals. Firstly, in terms of background, my client currently operates from an existing unit on Langley Road. With this lease set to expire, an opportunity has arisen to relocate to the former post office unit on Terminus Road, which is currently empty. We note that the requirements of Policy TC4 state that there should only be a maximum of 25% non-A1 frontage within the primary retail area, but we believe a more pragmatic and holistic approach should be taken, and this has been agreed by your officers, and the application has been recommended for approval for the reasons I now set out. The new Arndale Centre includes a large provision of A1 floor space, most of which has been pre-let, and on completion later this year will increase the proportion of A1 frontage above the 75% threshold as set out in Policy TC4, even with our proposals being implemented. The general health of Eastbourne Town Centre is very good, with a low vacancy rate of 7%, below the national average of 11%, and when assessing units on the, over three-quarters are in A1 use, with only 8.4% being A3, A4, or A5 use. This market confidence is reinforced by the western extension of the Arndale Centre. The larger units around the site are Blacks, Edinburgh Woolham Mill, Marks and Spencer and Debenhams, and suggests that this part of the town centre is also very healthy. The relocation of my client's operations would have a limited impact on the vibrancy and vitality in this area, as visitors will continue to shop here. The new Arndale Centre will inevitably shift the gravity of retailing and shoppers westwards, reducing footfall in the eastern part of the town centre to the detriment of businesses in this location. The proposals for a well-established and popular restaurant will help readdress this balance, attracting footfall to support local businesses. We note that there are some comments have been made by local residents regarding the late-night noise and disturbance. We would like to assure members that our client's recognised business model is to close at 11:00 PM, as this is the case at the existing establishment on Langley Road. The late-night disturbances that have attracted comments are likely in part due to other businesses in the area that open later into the evening beyond 12:00 midnight. Overall, the proposal simply involves the relocation of an established business in East bourne Town Centre, which is currently considered very healthy, as reinforced by the investment of the new Arndale Centre. The relocation of the unit to the eastern portion of the primary retail area will help maintain the balance of retailing once the new Arndale extension is open and attract the majority of shoppers with its large A1 units. I trust that members will understand these distinctive circumstances and endorse the recommendation of your officers, so that consent is granted. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Councillor Taylor?
I did read the communications last, oh, that were sent, and can I say, I think it's, I think that corner there is always pretty awful, quite frankly, and if we go that, what are those red things? You know, one may be a postbox, what's the, I mean, the whole corner there, I hope this development brightens that whole area up. I'm not sure about the wheelie bins, but it's always been a bit messy there. And I think with this application, perhaps they'll take on the task of tidying up all that corner, because it could look really good going into Langley Road. So it's going to be, you know, I think, beneficial to the town, without a doubt. Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The round one's a postbox, the square one is a business postbox. I'll have a word with the PA for me. That whole area is getting redeveloped after the, after the Arndale Centre has been completed, so I wouldn't know, that would be down to the next client. Councillor Mayor?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as I could see, the opening hours, first of all, which is 11 to 2300 hours, which is quite good reasonable time, because Domino's next door, which would be, which is quite late open, I've seen. Although this corner has gone down a bit dark, really, and I personally think it's going to be a good idea, but councillor Taylor has already asked this bins, which looks there. Now, especially through the night, I've seen all the students when they come into clubs, obviously, they make a mess on this corner here, basically because there was a cash machine round there, they used to always, they make a bit of a mess and get all the cans in their hand and throwing everywhere around. I don't know what can be done about that, but that is not my concern. I know it's a breach of condition somewhere here, but it's been accepted by the office. So personally, I personally would certainly say that it's going to brighten this corner up, which is, I think it's a good idea. So hopefully, if my colleagues, they agree with it, then I would rather go for the officer's recommendation with the conditions, and especially with the bins. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Through you, just to clarify the bin issue that a couple of councillors have mentioned, the gate is on here for antisocial behaviour issues at the instruction of the police. Members will note that the scheme has a bin enclosure to the rear of the plot. Here's the front on to Terminus Road, here's the gate roughly in this position here, and it will be under the stewardship of the operator to bring the bins to a recessed location away from public view, so that they will only be out for collection and be replaced post-collection. In terms of the front elevation and making a material change to this part of town, I echo that sentiment. Members will be mindful of the advertisement that will follow any change of use. That advertisement will fall under the advertisement regs, and if we have control, then we will impose the appropriate control. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Murdoch?
Thank you, Chair. Anyway, no, I actually think this is a good proposal. We're bringing here somewhere where it's actually sit-down-to-eat. Most places within this area are always takeaway. I know they offer the same, but to have somewhere where you can sit down as well as eat brings footfall to stay, not just to move on, which I think could be really good for this area. I know we have Bill's just round the corner, but that's about it, and lots of coffee shops, but to be able to sit down to eat, I think is good. So yes, I fully approve of this application. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I like fellow colleagues, I think it's going to improve the area. A building's been lying empty for a long time, so I'm quite happy with the change of use. Okay, thank you.
Lovely. We already have councillor Taylor, who's moved to approve. Who would like to second? Councillor Robertson? All those in favour of change of use, please raise. So unanimously approved for the change of use for 141, 145 Terminus Road. Thank you. Next item is item 33, Netherfield Avenue.
Thank you, Chairman. This application relates to modifications to a previously approved single-storey extension. Here we have some images of the application site and the back-to-back relationship between its neighbours. Here we have the existing property prior to the extension being formed. Members will note a conservatory and raised patio through here. Here's some photos pre-extension, so we have elevated steps up to finished floor level for the conservatory and a modest raised patio area. So here we see again the existing situation. What has been consented to and what has been approved is a single-storey extension that brings the conservatory, essentially the conservatory rear wall that we can see here, out to broadly this position through here. And the application before members is to have a safe transition zone from this patio door down to garden level. So here's the former extension, and here we have in this image here, the landing from the patio doors, a flight of steps down to garden level. See on the reverse image over here, the landing area is simply a landing area from the patio door down a flight of stairs to garden. Officers consider that the degree of overlooking that results from this element of the proposal, this element of the proposal at the rear is the steps and landing. At the front is a modest porch that is acceptable in broad planning terms. Any issues around overlooking from the platform and steps, in our view, is comparable to the overlooking that exists from the approved patio door. Chairman, we are recommending the scheme for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one objector, Mr. Curtis. When you're ready, press the grey button and off you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen Curtis, I live at number 38 Golding Road, and I'm speaking on behalf of my wife and our neighbours, Mr. and Mrs. Axel at number 34, Mr. and Mrs. Slidell at number 36, and Mrs. Freeman at number 40. Our issues are privacy and drainage. I'm sure you've all seen this sheet. Substantial trees in the applicant's back gardens provided mutual privacy until he removed them last year when he built his extension. Because of errors which occurred at the planning department at that time, a two-metre fence with a one-metre trellis is to be built at council taxpayers' expense on the instructions of the leader of the council, David Tutte. This fence will not be as high as the trees and is a compromise, so will be totally ineffective against the new platform. Mr. Chairman, you know me as a photographer. If I were to shoot to make you seem even more important, I would adopt a low viewpoint to make you look taller. Then to make you appear bigger and more imposing and dominant, I would get closer to you. It's perspective, it's about viewpoint. Our viewpoint in Golding Road is like that. This platform will appear as nearer and higher to us than the patio doors appear, and will give the opportunity to view across the new fence into our homes and gardens. Mutual privacy was not previously a problem at numbers 40 and 34 Golding Road, but the building of that extension has now made this new proposal an issue for them, especially at number 34, but neither were sent consultation letters. The new fence will be of little or no benefit to them. Now flooding, please see this sheet. As is obvious, water drains into our gardens down the slope from the old Isle of Langley, both on the surface and within the soil. The stream at the bottom of our gardens was put into a pipe, but this is not effective, so in the winter the gardens can get boggy. The effect of building anything in this garden is akin to putting your foot onto a wet but very sturdy sponge, especially with the unstable and unknown nature of the infill. Any building must have suitable foundations and drainage solutions, simply dumping hardcore in concrete creates problems. The proposed patio is on a slope, so will have to be a significant structure, and there is already another huge terrace under construction at the end of the applicant's garden, so inevitably there will be drainage issues, which could well lead to localised flooding. Just so you know, I wasn't always a photographer. I did start training as a consulting civil engineer, where you turn architect's dreams to structures that work, and spent an awful long time on building sites, also had a few years at the British Geological Survey. On behalf of all the objectors, I would say, we cannot do anything about the status quo, but please don't make it any worse. We ask you to consider that councillor Tutte has done his best to sort out the mistakes of the planning department by providing this expensive fence, but by granting this application, much of its benefit will be removed. On the drainage and flooding potential, we have made our case in public to the best of our knowledge and understanding, and it is now firmly on record. Thank you.
Thank you. There are a couple of issues there, I don't know if you want to just tidy them up for us, Mr. Palmer, first. Can I get you to turn your microphone off, please?
For clarification purposes, the issue around the new fence is one through this position through here, the back-to-back distance from the end of the extension to the back of the properties over here is in the region between 23 and 25 metres. Yes, there is a significant change of levels down, and I echo the concerns of the speaker in terms of ensuring that any structure is sound in relation to the local geology. As members will be aware, the construction of extensions and outbuildings, if they have control, are controlled under the building regulations. Similarly, the issue or the requirement for a platform from this level down into the garden is not a planning requirement, it's a requirement of the building regulations. If that door is going to open, then building regulations require a safe landing down into the garden. So it's competing and complementary legislation where building control are requiring the imposition of a transition zone down to the garden, and planning officers have heard that request and advised the applicant to keep the new landing, or the proposed landing, as small as practically possible to mitigate the degree of overlooking. I understand the frustrations of the speaker, who formerly had a large hedge to provide significant privacy. That hedge was not under the control of the speaker and all the neighbours. The applicant was quite within their rights, not having a TPO, Treaty Reservation Order on that hedge was quite within their right to remove it. That may have implications in terms of opening up the rear of this property. The extension that was consented to is marginally over what one could build without acquiring planning permission. We have consented...
As members will be aware, the construction of extensions and outbuildings, if they have control, are controlled under the building regulations. Similarly, the issue or the requirement for a platform from this level down into the garden is not a planning requirement, it's a requirement of the building regulations. If that door is going to open, then building regulations require a safe landing down into the garden. So it's competing and complementary legislation where building control are requiring the imposition of a transition zone down to the garden. And planning officers have heard that request and advised the applicant to keep the new landing, or the proposed landing, as small as practically possible to mitigate the degree of overlooking. I understand the frustrations of the speaker, who formerly had a large hedge to provide significant privacy. That hedge was not under the control of the speaker and all the neighbours. The applicant was quite within their rights. Not having a TPO, tree preservation order on that hedge was quite within their right to remove it. That may have implications in terms of opening up the rear of this property. The extension that was consented to is marginally over what one could build without acquiring planning permission. We have consented to that extension. That extension has been revisited, measured, and in accordance with the approved drawings. The application before members is not to debate the overlooking from the extension because that's pre-consented. It is to assess solely the transition platform and steps down to the garden. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, councillor Murdoch. Councillor Taylor.
You know what, Mr Chairman? I fully sympathise with the objectives of that. And there is nothing you can do about that patio door there, but the steps and patio bit coming out will aggravate the situation without a doubt. Now, there's been spoken about a fence being put up at the expense of Eastbourne Borough Council, is that, no? Previous view to the Golden Road prior to council funding fence being erected. Is that right? Can we clarify that?
Chairman, for clarification, the fence is not part of this application. The fence is a matter that has been discussed and resolved outside of this forum and outside of the debate, the merits of this scheme. The fence is a mechanism whereby, with the assistance of the leader of the council, whereby the degree of overlooking from that patio door will be mitigated to some degree. Thank you, Chairman.
Right, can I just...
Carry on.
And the other one was, I know it's a condition here, the surface water disposal, so that has to be sorted out before the planning goes ahead, before or within the officers' anticipation of what will be done with the surface water. So that will be done. Is there another condition that we can add there where this development does not go ahead unless there's this fence that's been talked about to replace the, I assume that's a Leylandi hedge that was there, and obviously a lot of people don't like them, but the impact that's been created by removing that hedge on other neighbours, quite frankly, is horrendous. And I think neighbours, when they build these extensions, don't respect the privacy of other people's back gardens. And that's what's happened here. That can't be changed now in some ways, and we're only looking at a small balcony to go down. But can that be, Mr Chairman, can that be a condition that we, nothing goes ahead at all until this fence is put up to mitigate the overlooking?
I would have to...
Through you, Chairman. If members are minded that the only way the scheme is acceptable in any form is by having the pre-existing mitigation, then they can inform themselves that such a condition would be appropriate. My advice is that the matters are separate and independent from each other. The transaction is a financial transaction between the council and a third party. There's no guarantee that that third party will deliver on that transaction, such that if there was that condition, the applicant would not be able to implement the terrace because the fence construction would be outside of their control. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, are you happy with that response, Mr Taylor, councillor Taylor?
No, not really. I think really, in my view, we should really be looking at either deferring until this is done or refusing the application until the future's seen that these residents are not overlooked as much as they are. I could express myself, I'm quite angry actually about this and the fact that it's fairly obvious that it's really a huge intrusion on people's back gardens there from those photographs that we see. And I'd move refusal, Mr Chairman. Might upset everybody, but I just don't think it's right.
Chairman, through you, clearly the planning department can't, well, they can control tree removal by way of the imposition of a tree preservation order. I trust members wouldn't support us serving TPOs on Leylandi hedges. Notwithstanding that, I think the councillor is appropriate in inviting officers to seek a deferment, and we can bring the case back to planning committee post the erection of the privacy fence. We can certainly do that. The applicant may choose to appeal on non-determination, that's in their gift. They may choose to encourage the implementation of the fence as a matter of urgency, and as soon as the fence is erected, we can bring the matter back to planning committee.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got a move to defer. Who would like to second, councillor Coles?
The removal of the trees was obviously within the gift of the person who wants to have the extension. But presumably, they must also be aware of the fact that their own privacy will now be exposed, because if they couldn't see beyond the trees, and neither could the people on the other side, now they're both able to see one another. It's just a comment.
Yes. Quite happy to second as well, okay. Okay, so we've got a recommendation to defer. Councillor Taylor's proposed, councillor Coles is happy to second. So all those in favour of deferment, please raise. Unanimously deferred. So we will ask for the fence to be installed before it comes back to planning again. Yes, thank you. Okay, Mr Palmer.
Thank you, Chairman. Next item, 85 Royal, the Parade, the Langtons Guesthouse. Here we have the building, so it's one-half of a semi-attached property. Members will know this guesthouse being opposite the Redoubt Fortress. Here we have a close-up image, so the application site is on the right-hand side. It's part of a mirrored front conservatory. Both conservatories formed historically in timber. That timber has suffered, given its location in a very prominent location. The application before members is to remove the timber conservatory to be replaced in UPVC. Officers have negotiated significantly with the owners of this establishment to get a close as practically possible to the existing timber form. And we can see on the left-hand image, the image we can see of the sample panel aligned with the former panel. It's not an identical match, but it's as close as you can form in modern plastic construction. Members, officers appreciate the issue about the symmetry of the scheme. The symmetry will be broken to some degree by the new proposal. We feel that, given the fact that every other guesthouse along this stretch has pre-existing plastic front conservatories, there are larger hotels along the seafront. I'm minded to remind members of the East Beach Hotel by way of example, where we are looking very strongly to replace certain elements of that building facade with a more traditional material. In this location, given the character has already been formed by small guesthouses with very discreet plastic conservatories, we are minded to recommend this to members with officers' support. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We have one speaker, this is the applicant for this, Mrs Cheater. Small grey button on the bottom right-hand corner, press that when you're ready to start speaking.
Thank you. Karen Cheater, the Langtons Guesthouse. We have made this planning application because the conservatory at the entrance of our guest house on the front here in Eastbourne is leaking cold and rotten. Despite our best efforts to replace sections of wood and regular general upkeep, it is no longer fit for purpose, and we are fighting an expensive losing battle with all that nature throws at it. We cannot use it for breakfast service during several months of the year, meaning that we have to close two of our guest rooms, thus losing the income they could provide. For a large part of the year, our guests cannot sit in the conservatory and enjoy Eastbourne seafront with a cup of tea or a glass of wine. It is just too cold, and it makes the rest of the house cold, thus increasing our heating bills. We work very hard to maintain high standards at the Langtons to give our guests the best possible stay with us, but unfortunately, online reviews mention the cold, leaky and uninviting conservatory. Negative reviews can of course impact hugely on bookings in this competitive market. The conservatory was only added to the front of the property in 1992. However, the design is very much in keeping with the rest of our lovely Victorian property. Being on the seafront in Eastbourne and in the conservation area, we acknowledge the sensitive nature of this application. However, the cost of replacing the conservatory in wood is just too expensive. We therefore want to replace it in the same design but in environmentally friendly, up-to-date materials. During the process of making this application, we have been extremely grateful for all the advice and input from councillor Murray and the conservation officer, who both attended site meetings, as well as the planning officer and the conservation committee. Our local window manufacturers and installers were especially helpful in producing and bringing to site an example profile to the exact specifications to show the planning officer. All of this advice and assistance has helped us to ensure that the proposed replacement conservatory replicates the current profile and design as closely as possible. The planning officer, as well as the conservation committee and conservation officer, have all indicated their approval in principle, and we would be very grateful if you would look favourably on our application. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to start? Councillor Murdoch.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I could totally understand the applicant's concerns. I mean, the way forward, she's trying to run a small business, you're trying to draw customers, you know, and as you say, when you get reports of drafty and damp places where you may have breakfast, totally understand. But looking at this as a building, yes, they've got to go the way forward, perhaps UPVC is the way forward. Hardwood is much desirable but so expensive now. Yeah, and they're forever, I can imagine, with the softwood that these were built from, filling, painting, filling, painting, and it just doesn't work in the end. Okay, thank you. So yes, as I say, totally understand the applicant's concerns, so would definitely be in agreement with this. It is only, you know, a small guesthouse, and as you say, there's a lot of other smallish guesthouses along here that have had to go the same way. Yeah, other than that, it's totally in keeping with what they've got. They've tried their best to mirror image what they have, and it wouldn't surprise me if next door goes the same way later on in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor, thank councillor Mia.
Is next door already done? Just out of curiosity. Oh, right. Can I, can I first of all say, you know I have a bee in my bonnet about plastic windows, but can I thank the applicants for coming along and working with our officers to try and replicate something that will, you know, look good on the front? Most of these houses didn't have conservatories when they were first built. It's sad because I looked and obviously the upper windows are already plastic, which is unfortunate because that actually devalues the property as a property. But nevertheless, I think it's very, very important that when people want to change the windows, that they work with the officers. In actual fact, the upstairs windows are not very attractive as far as a Victorian house goes, because, believe you me, they do replica sash-cooled windows that would be much better than that. But if they're happy with that, that's okay. But as far as the conservatory is concerned, they're working with the officers, and I hope it works out for them. But I must say, Mr Chairman, please, please, any applicants, should make sure they come and have a word with our conservation officer and the officers to see whether they can put in something that is actually appropriate. Thank you. I'm, well, councillor Murdoch may move for approval, but I'm quite happy to...
Councillor Taylor, yes, I think you've made a couple of valid points there. This applicant has gone through all the right channels. They've approached the officers, they've approached myself, they've approached the conservation group to seek their guidance on what should be done. And they've gone right out of their way to get a really good quality plastic window, UPVC window. I notice that some of the detailing, they've got like the panels at the bottom are nice raised and fielded panels, which are much more expensive than just a flat one. So they've really gone over and above to make sure that they've complied with everything that we've suggested. And once again, I defer back to our statement that each application needs to be taken on its own merit, and we will do that in the case of everything along the seafront. But we also have listened to the hoteliers, and where we can, we are doing all that we can to support them and make their life as easy as possible. Councillor Mia.
Thank you, Chair. I think most of the stuff has already been said by councillor Taylor and councillor Murdoch. Yes, I personally always like to see the wooden frames, all those Victorians always liked, but unfortunately, we'll have to cooperate with the time, how the things are developing, and our seafront needs to be developed. And I personally would like to appreciate the applicant who has came and spoke, and it is very nice to see that we all work together, the officers, the applicant, the councillors, we are all trying to help each other. And everything possible that can be done, and it is, you know, this is how we're looking at everything, and we always put our personal opinions, not to look at like, oh, we're going to support this, we're going to support that. That's not the way it works. It works as a team. And as the applicant has already gone through with all the offices and things, it is very much greatly appreciated that, you know, these are the way we'd like to work together so things can be moved on and we can improve and the vision of the town. So I personally am really for it, so I wouldn't mind whoever proposes that. Thank you.
Councillor Coles?
Very much. I'd just like to say that although the, I was surprised to learn that the conservatory at the front was a fairly recent acquisition, it adds to the property, it actually looks charming. charming, and the applicants are, obviously want to keep it, are looking as much as possible as it is now, but they have to have these financial considerations as well. So I'm very happy to support this application and enable them, as part of the hospitality, people here in Eastbourne, to go forward with their business.
Thank you. So councillor Murdoch, would you like to move approval? Councillor Mia, second. So all those in favour of the adaption, please raise. So unanimously approved for the conservatory to be replaced. Thank you. Next item is item 12, sorry. Yes, Carberry Lodge, yeah. No, no. King's Drive, sorry, King's Drive's next. Do you want to do Carberry Lodge first, if you're waiting for that one? Carberry Lodge first.
Thank you, Chairman. Carberry Lodge, edged red on the plan before members. The rear garden of Carberry Lodge forms the application site, so we're in this location through, through here. The proposal before members is to excavate, and I do say excavate because it's slightly higher level than the roadway, excavate the back garden to form a bungalow. The bungalow has access to a pull-in car park space, a very modest garden courtyard area to the front and side. The roof lights look out to the front and also to the rear. There is no overlooking for the rear roof lights. I'll come on to show you that in a moment. So here we have Carberry Lodge property, here we have their back garden, and currently, broadly, the back gardens of Carbrook and its existing neighbour is uniform. So the proposal is to drop an element of the back garden to sink the building to reduce its scale and bulk impact on adjoining neighbouring plots. I mentioned previously that the rear dormer, sorry, the rear roof light will not cause any overlooking, so here we have the existing boundary treatment to Mulberry Cottage and their garden level, so the rear roof lights will look out on that fence and skyward, the front roof light will look to the street. Chairman, we consider this to be an appropriate form of development in this suburban location. There are issues around the construction and feasibility of the scheme, given the fact that we are looking to create a recessed, sunken building. That will have impact on the spoil that is removed from the site. We've consulted with county highways around that spoil removal, and subject to the appropriate licences and skips on the highway, then they are content that the construction of the building will not give any long-term highway safety issues. We recommend the scheme for approval. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. No speakers on this one. So councillor Mia.
Thank you, Chair. I have been round there and I've looked at, but because it's a very old road where everything is there, and when I looked at everything, to be precise with you, I haven't came across anything that I can complain against what the officers has reported here. Unless any other colleagues has got anything to talk about, then obviously I'm going to listen to it, but I'm actually for it. So I would mind to propose it when the discussion is over. Thank you.
Councillor Metcalfe?
Thank you, Chair. Carbrook Lodge, I know quite well. I used to live at number 12 Selwyn Road, which backed on to Carbrook Lodge, and in fact, as a youngster, I used to play in the garden at Carbrook Lodge with the children living there. And all I would say, and it's just a comment I would make, it's a very small garden to be putting another property in, in my estimation, and I'm quite surprised that this application came forward with such a small area and not leaving a lot of garden left for either property. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd just like to echo the previous councillors'意见. I'm a little bit concerned that it seems rather a small garden area to build in. Is it possibly an overdevelopment of the site? Yeah, I have some concerns about that. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. We are looking these days to sort of more modern living. There's a number of properties that we've put through in the past which don't have any gardens. We don't use this as a precedent, obviously, but this is a sort of slightly different way of thinking than what we used to think sort of five years ago. Councillor Coles?
Thank you very much. Just earlier in the evening, we talked about another planning application where it was a very small garden, and we let it go through. I went to look at this site and I was, at first, I thought it's going to be a great shame because I thought we're going to lose the fencing completely, but in fact, it's going to be a relatively small area of that fencing where the access and ingress will be. And therefore, I don't think it's going to have too much of an impact on the street scene itself, and that rather nice, old, I don't know how old the fence is, but it looks old, that lovely grey colour will still be there in essence. In terms of the actual building, I think that whoever goes in and lives there will live there because they want to live there and they're going to be very happy with the size of the garden.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor?
Mr Chairman, it's interesting, because we had an application last time where people were sinking the extension and, you know, the level of it down, and I think they've achieved that here. I quite like it, actually. I think it's a, it's a nice little development. It doesn't really impact on anybody else. And I've always learned, if it's, if it has a road running along the side, you get the corner plots or corner house, road running on the side with sufficient room to put a dwelling in the back, then there's, to me, there's no problem with that. And I think this is by sinking it in the ground a little bit like that has taken a massive impact away from other residents and then given them a very nice little, a little house there. So very happy with it, Mr Chairman. Move to approve?
If you're happy with it. I'm just going to make a comment myself. I came into the meeting 50/50 on this one because the flint wall, I was concerned about the street scenes, us losing that. It is only a small portion, but then I'm, especially with that picture there, you can see the quality of the craftsmanship at the low level, and then what we get these days, modern build, which is the straight lines, the flints, you know, it's not the same sort of work. So when we, when they're doing the work for the dig out, are we going to be losing that wall and then it's going to get rebuilt? Or is there something that we can put in place to sort of try and preserve the wall and only lose the part that they need for the driveway? Thank you. That would be my only concern, so if with the committee's indulgence, I'd like to sort of try and get that in place if we can. But apart from that, I'm happy to take the move. And councillor Mia, if you have a second. So all those in favour, please raise. So unanimously approved for Carisbrook Lodge. If you'd like to, if you'd like to make a run for it. Councillor Murdoch, would you like to leave the room?
Let's get some tissue.
Mr Palmer? Thank you, Chairman. My advice to all members in the room is that, my view is that you should all have a personal interest in this case, given the relationship you have with the applicant. We had a discussion at the start of the agenda, those that deemed that their personal interest had moved to more one of a prejudicial interest has vacated, and on that premise, I shall introduce the scheme. The application site is edged red, and we can see it is a very modest first floor extension. Here's the existing front of the property. So we have a catslide roof that comes down above the garage. The application proposes that catslide is removed and replaced with a very modest one-room extension. So inside view, here we have the catslide roof, and here we have the first floor single room. Members, we consider that the change to this part of the scheme through here would not materially impact on the quality of the living environment for next door, in terms of loss of outlook, loss of privacy, and remains wholly in character with the host property in particular, and the properties in the wider character of the area. Chairman, we are recommending the scheme for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. So this one would normally go through delegated, but because it's one of the councillors that's applying, it's come to full committee. Those people that feel that they've got too much involvement have left the room. We all, obviously, know councillor Belsey, but we can vote on this. Have you got any comments? Councillor Metcalfe?
Thank you, Chair. There's only one comment I would make, and that's in the site description, that it says it's a detached property on the eastern side of King's Drive. While I would dispute that, I'd say it was on the western side.
Thank you. Councillor Coles?
Thank you. When I first read this application, when I was on the site visit on Saturday, I hadn't actually realised it was councillor Belsey's at all, but I did think that, then I realised it was councillor Belsey and thought, I understood why it's come to committee, because I think as soon as I read this, I thought this would normally have been passed under delegation because I see no trouble with it at all.
Thank you. So do I have a move? Councillor Mia, if you'd like to say a word? It's okay.
Thank you, Chair. I never knew councillor Belsey's that rich, really. He's building another room there, my God. Well, I wish him all the best, and truly, what I really like now, I think I like the new application than the old already left there because that roof goes in a very different angle, which is not nice to, but this one looks good. And to me, I never knew it was councillor Belsey's house until this evening I came here and I thought, oh, councillor Belsey, it says C. Belsey, but who's that? But now I realise it was councillor Belsey. But I like the design, the way it's been put up, and I personally wouldn't mind to propose that, as long as it's within the personal interest, obviously, because we're all councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Coles, are you going to propose? Councillor Mia to second. All those in favour, please raise. Unanimously approved for the adoptions to 203 King's Drive. Mr Palmer?
Thank you, Chairman. Item number 14, housing deliveries, our quarterly report. Headline is that we're still under delivery, no shop news there. We will endeavour to support as many new housing schemes as we can. This forum of planning policy is the life forum of this case being fought. Members, we are still behind our IP house of plans, but no new news there. Item number 15 is an information report requesting that we review our car parking standards. That has been evaluated by my colleagues, the planning policy, and will go to cabinet for ratification. The advice in that report is that the right vehicle for reviewing our car parking standards is when we next review our local plan. So this report, the advice of members, that that table will be put on hold till the review of the local plan. Item 16 is our quarterly performance report. Members will note that our performance is exceeding national PIs, so that is all to have a good. Item 17 is the appeal decisions. Quick cancer through the appeal decisions. 29 Rosebury Avenue is the first one, sorry, above King's is the first one. And broadly, they were looking in this position here to have a first floor balcony, that one point six metres out from the front of the houses that's here, and that was dismissed on appeal for being out of character, all being down to the belt, lots of plants and balconies. So that appeal was dismissed. 29 Rosebury Avenue. Members who may know this building, it has a detached garage in its front garden. That detached garage was occupied by an independent person for the main house, such that they required planning permission, they implied the planning permission to keep it as a flat essentially, small bungalow, and that was dismissed on appeal for being significantly substandard in accommodation terms. 29 St Anne's Road, a rare beast in terms of an appeal decision. We are looking here at an application to do some works to an antique tree that's under the metro office. It's quite a large tree, you can't see it from the main thoroughfare which runs through here, you can only see it when you go into the rear car park and court. Notwithstanding that, it had a TPO on it, it has a TPO on it. We resisted the lopping, the polling of the tree. The appeal inspector informed themselves that because it doesn't have a high market profile, the polling of the tree was acceptable, and we lost that appeal. Thank you, Chairman. Item number 18, that was our report. Do members want to see the application scheme for Victoria Drive Centre? Do we have time?
We've got plenty of time there. Councillor Taylor, do you have a question on the last item?
No, the questions are item 15.
Item 15? Yes, okay, yeah.
Well, as you know, it came up at full council, so it would be, it would be wrong not to make a comment on it. And really, to have a local car parking scheme or would, in my view, I suppose, satisfy all the problems that this committee always has when it comes to lack of car parking on development. And I think it would be wrong just to let this go through with no real comment from this committee. And I think that the feeling I've had in the past, that this committee's always felt that we need to develop more car parking facilities for each dwelling within Eastbourne, even if it's in the town centre, we should have a policy on it and work towards that, and not just depend on what the national policy is or what the county's views are on parking. I think we need to have our own views. So it would have been nice, sir, Mr Chairman, if, my view are that we should have a policy, Eastbourne Borough Council should have a policy, even if it's coming out with their new borough, borough plan in the future. But it'd be nice to hear what other members of the committee would think about the parking standards for Eastbourne Borough Council. would think about the parking standards for Eastbourne Borough Council.
We've got group review coming up, which will be in place in 2021, isn't it? Yep. And we're looking to sort of connect views, sort of processes will be put in place before then. We're not going to be able to implement anything before then, I don't think. But yeah, I do agree that we, I'm not sort of waging this through as though we're not going to do anything about it. And this is a serious concern and we do need to do something. We need to have some sort of system in place where we get a bit more control, I think. So councillor Meir?
Oh, thank you, Chair.
Well, truly, this is where I was concerned. Councillor Barra has raised the actual issue. We do have these situations here and we know we have had some situation in the just recent past that, you know, about these parking issues. And I've always raised questions against the parking issues. But unfortunately, I was told always it's the highway. If they don't, if they don't object anything, then we can't do anything about it. We have to look in merit of our own application with the planning. So, but with the planning, I always find that a parking issue is always relevant with it. When we permit some houses or some dwellings somewhere, it always applies with a parking. And nowadays, everywhere you go, not just in Eastbourne, in the whole country, the house is built by one car park space. That's what they say normally. But every household has two, three car parks, you know, two, three cars they need to park. So however, I think it is a very important issue that you have raised. And I think in 2021, when the new thing is coming, we should really do something about it for the local policy. And I personally would be grateful for that. Thank you.
Just a comment to us, Chair, thank you. Is, I've sat in on these planning meetings on a number of occasions as substitute and we do seem to spend quite a bit of time in each of the meetings on deciding on the car parking spaces. And it does seem a little bit of a waste of valuable time on that subject. Thank you.
But we also, what we can't do is we can't start setting a precedent that every single house has to have three car park spaces because then we don't think built. So we've got to come to some sort of compromise between the two. So maybe take something out. And then each, each planning application has its own merits as well. So it's always going to be a transition. But I think it would be nice to have something which is coming from us rather than coming from the county.
I think you've already suggested that I think we will need to sit down with someone who has a very good community there and try and see what they're saying.
Okay, councillor Robinson?
Well, just to make the comment that, yeah, I totally agree we need a policy for parking. Maybe do make a difference between parking with developments in town centre to out of town centre, as an example. Because the criteria might have to be different for both different areas. But it's something that we can both all can work on.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just quickly on what you just said earlier about both parties having a discussion between themselves. Just bearing in mind this comes to cabinet on the 21st of March, when decisions will be made, perhaps we should have a discussion sooner rather than later and perhaps have our findings before that cabinet decision's made.
This is going through cabinet at the moment, or will go through cabinet at the moment as it is. What we're looking to do is change policy for 2021. So, because I don't, I don't think realistically that we can, we can do anything before then.
Saying is our comment should be that we need to look at a policy for Eastbourne.
Okay, yes, yep.
We could say that, that's what we do. Or, or you can go for the policy where we already have zoned policies at the moment, which we worked to, so the town centre has no parking. The next ring out has half a car per dwelling. And the next, it sounds funny, but it does work. And then the next, the next ring out has one and a half cars. And if you look over in the harbour, they got away with that by putting a fence across the driveway bit. You probably didn't notice it. They had a garage for one car and then they had a driveway. You could fit another car on. But if you put a gate across that you could open to use that the developer got round and having two car parking spaces within the harbour. But you can go with that policy, which we've been done, but we struggle with it, Mr. Chairman. That's the trouble. So I think we need to...
So if we could just make sure that goes through to cabinet, Mr. Palmer? Through the minutes?
In a director's... All things will be on the table at the review stage. The most appropriate way for the policy to be framed, we don't know because we haven't looked at it. But there's got to have, there will be some compromise in terms of very central urban locations to more suburban locations across the town. And the policy should reflect that in its car parking standard.
So...
The new location of the Dr. Surgery, we have to attend to that one.
Thank you, Chairman. Members may recall this came pre-application and through to an outline approval. We have the Sasebury occupied building through here, the former pub. The Pauline Green is now vacated and the car park off Victoria Gardens, Victoria Drive through here. Green, Albert Park through here is the brother shops. Green Street Surgery is off the slide down here. So what they're looking to do is to redevelop the site to have a new surgery. And it is a T-shaped, L-shaped building with access retained off the existing position through here to a car park court to the front. The majority of the trees are retained along Victoria Drive frontage. The elevation terms, and this is purely illustrative because they haven't pursued it through to a formal application. So we have a glazed central entrance in through here. We have, this is the view as you approach from Victoria Gardens. So the entrance is tucked in here. This part of the building is to be a pharmacy, a large pharmacy downstairs. And then upstairs and through the building, we have a range of accommodation. So we have a, in here, we have the main reception and waiting area. Consulting rooms are shaded blue. The support services is shaded grey and the communal parts are shaded pink. So we have at ground floor level, as I say, a new pharmacy, a number of consulting rooms, not only for the existing surgery and the practitioners, but also complementary treatments, minor injuries, et cetera, will be facilitated within this new building. It has the wholehearted support of the commissioners from the NHS, who are looking to move a lot of resources closer to the community than having them in a more of a district centre location. Any comments? We will take back to the applicants to inform them of their design prior to formally submitting. Members will, of this committee, will be receiving a formal invite to a pre-application session that the applicants will be hosting with the local community. Thank you, Chairman.
I would have to declare a, probably possibly, as a personal interest, because my daughter is a neighbour. So maybe before you discuss it, I'll leave. I know it's, I know it's an informal, and we'll probably go to a site visit, but perhaps the obviously legal observer. Fine, that's okay.
Well, I also would have to declare, because I got a friend that lives in Victoria Gardens. So...
That's a personal interest though, I don't think it's...
Members need to remember that it's a pre-application discussion and it's not... We're going to back it in a formal fashion.
Thank you very much for that, planning officer. And I fully understand that. However, I have already had some emails with you. And as this is actually my surgery, I do feel that I do have an interest in this. And when it comes to planning, I probably won't sit in on it.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Chair. Well, no, I haven't got any of these interests because it's old town and I haven't got any clue. But I know the space where we have discussed in the past about that and we had the formal permission and all that stuff. But I personally support this scheme to get this surgery done because... No, no, I understand. Yeah, it's, yeah, right. But personally, well, my question was the entrance shows there. Officer, can we go back to the entrance, please? That entrance, the drive-in entrance. Is it in, is it in Victoria Gardens or is it in Victoria Drive?
Victoria Gardens. This is extended access to the one that currently exists in Victoria Gardens.
Gardens, that's fine then. That answers my question because, because Victoria Drive is very busy road, it's best to take it somewhere. So I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you all your good night.